Welcome, everyone, here and at home to the May 11th City Council Work Session. The item that we're going to be talking about first today is our Street Preservation Project. City Manager?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll just turn over to our City Engineer, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor Piercy, and members of the council. So, I'd like to start by recognizing the members of our Street Repair Review Panel that helped us in coming up with the list that you have before you today. So, here today is Howie Baney, Janet Calvert, and John Borowski. Any else who's slipped in. And the other members include Jim Wilcox, Steve Lee, Gary Wildish, Paul Hobel, Dan Brown, Paul Adkins, Bob Klein, Clayton Walker, and Bruce Mulligan. And a little bit later, I'll talk about the role of the Street Repair Review Panel in coming up with the list of projects that are before you today. So, today, we're asking you to approve additional street preservation projects to use with the anticipated bond proceeds after we complete the 32 projects that were listed in the bond measure. And after two years of construction and several bid openings this year, we anticipate that we'll have approximately $10 million remaining after we complete those 32 streets. And the voter pamphlet identified the process to add additional streets, which was essentially getting the council approval to add any additional streets after the 32 were complete. And the reason we're coming to you at this time is, assuming that you approve these additional streets, we'll begin work immediately with the anticipation of going to construction on those additional streets in 2013. And it would help us balance our workload, the workload of our Maintenance Division that does a lot of work on the stormwater and wastewater system in advance of our paving project, and the work of our partners, Northwest Natural and E-Web, that also do a lot of work on their utilities in advance of our paving project. So, we're asking today so we can be prepared to go to construction in 2013 on these additional streets. So, the process we used to identify the additional streets was we looked at the criteria in the voter's pamphlet, which included citizen input and the citizens saying, "We want to see reconstruction and we want to see it on the major streets." The science of pavement management, which is a little counter to that in saying, "We should focus on overlay projects because that's where the most cost-effective use of funds are on pavement preservation projects." But also focusing on the arterial and collector street system because that's the most important to the mobility of the community. And then we also looked at alternate modes. So, we looked at what streets need work on access ramps, which streets have bike facilities, which streets are transit routes. And then finally, the last criteria was geographic distribution so that the entire community benefits from the bond measure and from the extra streets that we'd be able to do. And for that, we used the council wards as a criteria for geographic distribution. And so, we came up with a group of projects that totaled 12.33 million, so it was a little more than the 10 million, and then scored those against the criteria that I just walked you through. And then the role of the Street Repair Review Panel, we looked to that group because they represent a broad cross-section of the community. And if you remember the names that I read through, they represent cyclists and the commercial -- people that are involved in commercial businesses and geographically pretty well-distributed throughout the community. So, we felt we had a pretty good mix of people on that committee. And that's also a group that's very interested in pavement preservation and very knowledgeable in pavement preservation. We've worked with that group for two years now in reviewing how we've expended bond proceeds. And you've heard their reports the last two years on the work that the staff has done. So, we presented the group of projects and the criteria, and we separated it into two groups of about 8 million and 4 million. The idea is that, well, we're pretty confident we're going to have 10 million remaining, but let's go a little shy and start with 8 million that we start work immediately on. And if we continue to see the extremely favorable bidding climate the rest of this year and beginning next year, if we have the approval, then we'll add additional projects. So, we presented that to the Street Repair Review Panel, and they had a very lively and robust discussion on a whole variety of things, but aspects of pavement preservation, whether we should focus on overlay projects or whether we should focus on reconstruction projects, more focus on facilities that have -- or roads that have bike facilities or not. But then they came down on a group of projects that include projects in all of the council wards, total about 6.5 million. So, it gets us something that we can start work on immediately and coordinate with our utility partners on. And then they wanted to come back and talk about not only the projects that we presented that they didn't endorse, but a larger array of projects so they'd have more to select from. And then they'd want to be able to have a discussion about pavement reconstruction versus pavement overlay projects. And they wanted to be able to tour a lot of these streets. So, we're in the process of putting that map together and those projects together. And we'll meet with the Street Repair Review Panel later that month to look at additional projects. But at this time, we're asking the council to approve the list that's shown as Attachment A. And if you do that, then we'll begin to work on those and coordinate with our partners. And I'd be happy to -- just a couple of comments on Attachment B. I did the math wrong, so the total on that is all the numbers that add up to something over 5 million. I think I have 3.4. So, the individual project numbers are correct, but the total is wrong.
Thank you.
Carry the one.
Yeah.
Well, I think we're --
I carry the one.
We're all delighted that we've been able to repair the amount of streets we've been able to repair and that we're able to do some additional ones. It's a great benefit to the community. And when I look at this list, I'm on Fifth Avenue every day, and I know what a riotous ride that is. So, appreciate seeing that on the list. I hear from people every day about 18th and Roosevelt, we've talked about many times. So, it's all good to see these here. So, thank you for that. Alan, you wanted to --
A couple of questions, Mark. Thanks for doing this process. It looks really good to me. The $10 million exclusively came from the better bidding climate, the cost climate?
Well, yeah, a couple of things. It was the recession and the bidding climate. It was the cost of money, so we're not anticipating paying the amount of interest we thought we were at the beginning. I think that was a couple of million. And then we're also -- well, two other things. We're using different paving techniques. So, if you remember, last year out on 18th, we used really recycling some of the roadway in place. So, it reduced the number of trucks that took away old material and the trucks brought in new material. So, that was a cost savings on that project as well. And then some of the streets, as bad as they were on the surface, our predecessors did a pretty good job in the design. And so, the failure didn't go all the way down to the base course, so it didn't require as much work as we had thought, just from being able to see what we could see on the surface.
Okay. And so, I like the list that we're going to approve, and I support that. The not to endorse that the Attachment B, the $5 million worth of projects, so are those -- you said, "We still have 3.5 million approximately left."
Right.
Are these ones on Attachment B, are they -- is it going to be coming out of that pool, or are these off the table and there's going to be another?
No, it'll be these plus more. So, it'll be -- these will be part of a larger pool of projects.
So, these are kind of Tier 2, and Tier 2 will get bigger?
Right.
To choose from.
Exactly.
Did we end up buying the equipment to do that reconstruction road? Because we were using somebody else's, weren't we?
No, that works all privately contracted. So, there's only a few contractors. It's a pretty specialized piece of equipment, and it's a pretty expensive piece of equipment. So, there's a lot of -- those contractors move around pretty much the Willamette Valley to do that type of work.
Okay. Yeah, I saw that equipment because they did the street right in front of my office. And it was pretty amazing how fast it just ground up the street, reconstituted it, and put it back down. It was amazing. It was very effective and efficient, and they had a street in like a day. So, and then, so the process of getting to the next tier of -- you have an estimate of when you'll try to do that, and we'll use the same process?
Yeah, we'll use the -- well, it'll be a little bit different. I think we'll use the same criteria because the criteria really came from the voter's pamphlet. But we'll give the Street Repair Review Panel the chance to -- a map so they can see all of the streets and get a better feel for that. And then, I haven't quite walked through the steps on how we'll winnow that list down to something that balances the money we have available.
Yeah. One of the things I pushed real hard for when we did the original bond was to get geographic distribution around. And when you looked at the map of all the roads that we were going to repair, that people could vote on, that was the list. It was very geographically distributed, and I think that helped with the passage of the bond measure. And I think keeping to that is going to be very important in distributing that benefit around the city through all the different wards.
George Pauling?
Yeah, and speaking of the bond measure, when is it -- the current one, when is it the final year on it?
The final year of construction will be 2013. But our hope is to get the 32 streets done in 2012 and the extra streets done in 2013.
Okay, so then, in 2013, we'll be -- presumably, be going out and asking the voters for another five-year bond? Is that the anticipation?
It could be 2013. I think that's a bigger discussion around our long-term financial. There may be some advantages in 2012. That'll be a part of the whole discussion.
And the repair work that's going to get started here shortly on Coburg Road, is that part of this bond money? Not the ones that we're talking about today, but the overall bond?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
There's two bond measure projects on Coburg Road, and then there's federal funding for a third section of Coburg Road.
Okay, and then, the part that we're talking about today is an additional?
That's right.
So, the entire length of Coburg Road eventually will get done within the next two years. Okay. And then, this bond measure money, this isn't the type of money to use for like the Sandy Drive project. It can't be used for that, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, on Attachment B, I noticed that we had Willackenzee from Bogart Lane to Coburg Road. And in the AIS, it says that the Street Repair Review Panel would like to get out and walk some of these streets. Is that correct? Could you have them walk all the way to the dead end of Willackenzee? That's the east end. There's some pretty good holes where the pavement is actually starting to do -- I think it's called Alligator. It's starting to separate. So, when you're looking at that in the future, I would suggest take a little bit farther walk.
Familiar with that stretch?
Mike your next.
Thank you, Mayor. The theme for today, it seems, is bonds we've asked the citizens of Eugene to pass and what we've done with the money in it. I just -- I'm really happy that we put out a list and a specific map and said, "This is what we'll do, and we'll do it to the best of our ability if you'll trust us with the money." I think that you guys have done a fantastic job of doing exactly that and then a little bit more and getting a little bit more for the money. Part of that's the financial climate and the bids that you've got here. I know how hard you guys have worked, and I'm really happy to see us getting so far down this road, succeeding with these bond funds. So, good job.
Thank you.
Get ready for the motion. Only other comment I would make is I really want to give you a lot of praise for the innovations and the kind of effort you've made to get more for the money that we have and also to do practices that reduce our impact on the environment and climate change and all of that. So, I just appreciate that whole effort very much and encourage us to keep on trying to do as much as we can in that way. So, thank you very much. You want to put the motion up?
I move to authorize the additional streets shown on Attachment A to the list of streets to be repaired with bond measure proceeds.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Seeing no one in the queue, all those in favor, please indicate. In favor, none in opposition, it passes. Thank you very much. Good job.
Good job, Mark.
So, next -- our next item on our agenda is the Ridgeline Park acquisitions. Manager?
Good afternoon. My name is Eric Wold. I am the Natural Resources Manager in the Parks and Open Space Division. Good to see you all today. So, the purpose of my talk today is to give you an overview of the accomplishments we've had implementing two bond measures, really, for the Ridgeline, the 1998 bond measure as well as the 2006 bond measure. I'll start out by giving you a little bit of context of the Ridgeline. Then I'll give a summary of some of the vision and policy documents that pertain to it. I'll go over the accomplishments we've had and what we've actually acquired, as well as some of the funding that goes along with that. I'll describe some of the capital improvements we've been able to achieve in the last few years, as well as summarize the annual O&amp;M gap we have and the capital backlog we have, and then wind up with time for discussion. So, to start out with, for context, when we talk about the Ridgeline area, we're really talking about a 20-mile corridor on the east side of Eugene around Lane Community College and winding through the south hills all the way out towards Fern Ridge Reservoir. So, just for context, I'll use the laser pointer here. A landmark that everybody knows here is Spencer Butte Park. Over here on the east, Lane Community College, Suzanne Arley Park, which you were all heavily involved with earlier this -- or end of last year. And on the west side, we have Fern Ridge Reservoir. So, you'll be seeing some maps like this throughout the presentation today. So, something that we all recognize and appreciate about our community is Spencer Butte Park. That's the crown jewel of our system. Part of what makes our Ridgeline so special is that it's a scenic backdrop for the whole community, as well as because it has a lot of connectivity to it, it has a lot of benefits for both recreational purposes and for habitat purposes. If you ever get up on the Ridgeline, you get amazing views, both to the west towards Fern Ridge Reservoir. And if you're at the top of Spencer Butte on really clear days, you can actually see all the way to the ocean. And to the east, you can see the Three Sisters. It's great and well-known for its hiking, and it's actually been designated by the U.S. Department of Interior as a national recreation trail. And in addition to hiking, some newer recreation activities like trail running have taken off. And there's an annual event called the Ridgeline Ramble, which began, I think, in 2007. And it's happening two weeks from today, or two weeks from last Saturday, I think, this year. An activity that is available for part of the system is mountain biking. So, in addition to all those recreational features, part of what makes our Ridgeline special are the habitats that exist there. And this picture exemplifies three of those really well. In the foreground, we have prairie, which was formerly very common in the Willamette Valley and now is greatly reduced. As you go back, you see a few trees. Those are oak trees, oak savanna. As you go higher up the Ridgeline, it turns into oak woodland, which is just a denser type of oak forest. And at the very top, you've got conifer forest. Part of why this is important is, in Oregon, the prairie, the oak savanna, and the oak woodland habitats are viewed as some of the highest conservation priorities in the state. And so, funding organizations like the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board and even federal funding agencies look to the Oregon Conservation Strategy to prioritize what they fund. And not only are these habitat types identified as high priorities, but specifically, the Eugene Ridgeline is identified as a key area. In addition to those habitats, we've got headwater streams, which through protection, we benefit the water quality of Eugene and reduce some of the erosion issues and other things that come as we develop out. And then there are just some amazingly beautiful animals out there, like these birds and butterfly. And if you get into the darker coniferous forests, we have really amazing things like palliated woodpeckers and restaurant street jowls. So, with that background, I'll go a little bit into the vision and policy documents that guide what we do in the Ridgeline. Beginning in 1998, the community passed a bond measure worth over $25 million. Of that money, 3.7 million was specifically targeted towards Ridgeline acquisition. Then, in 2003, there was a regional effort. Eugene, Springfield, Willamette Lane, Land County were all involved in developing a Rivers to Ridges vision and action plan. And that was a really important regional vision. And through that collaboration, we were able to identify connections that extend beyond just the city of Eugene to benefit recreational connectivity between the cities and out towards some of the rural areas. Then, in 2005, the Parks Recreation Open Space Comprehensive Plan was passed, and its companion, the Project and Priority Plan, was adopted by the City Council. Both the comprehensive plan and the project and priority plan had many goals or specific projects targeted towards the Ridgeline Trail Expansion or Ridgeline Park Expansion. Then, in 2006, another bond measure was passed, and $5.75 million of that bond was directed towards Ridgeline Park Expansion. Then, in 2008, again, this was a refinement of the Rivers to Ridges Plan that was endorsed in 2003. That same partnership and even more partners joined to refine the Rivers to Ridges vision for the Ridgeline, to be more geographically explicit and provide more detail about what we wanted to do in the Ridgeline. And City Council endorsed that in 2008, as well as Land County, Willamette Lane, City of Springfield. So, to achieve -- well, so here's the map from that Ridgeline Open Space Vision Plan in 2008. And again, I'll orient you a little bit with the pointer. So, Spencer Butte Park here, Lane Community College here. These light green shaded blocks represent significant habitat that were identified for future conservation of some sort. And then over here, again, in the west, we've got Fern Ridge Reservoir and Wild Everest Ridge is right there. And I'll jump the gun a little bit, but through the work of staff and council, really, this whole area is now Suzanne Arley Park. So, a major connection was made just in the last few months. So, some of the themes of that Ridgeline vision are to protect scenic quality, to try to create connectivity both within the Ridgeline as well as to other places. So, connectivity between the Ridgeline and neighborhoods, connectivity between the Ridgeline and other parks, and connectivity to the Amazon Creek Corridor, the West Eugene Wetlands, and all the way west to Fern Ridge. Additionally, the goal was to try to enhance recreation and education opportunities in the Ridgeline, to protect and restore habitat, protect and enhance rivers, waterways, and wetlands, maintain public safety, and to base all of this on voluntary participation. And in terms of acquisition, that means working with willing sellers. To achieve all that, we've really benefited from a partnership, which we call the Rivers to Ridges Partnership. Some of you in the past may have heard of the West Eugene Wetlands Partnership. That group has reidentified itself as the Rivers to Ridges Partnership to embrace that broader vision beyond West Eugene that we all have mutual goals around. So, these nine organizations are the official partners in the Rivers to Ridges Partnership. And we've benefited greatly by working together with them now over a 15-year period of time. So, in terms of acquisition funding, in addition to the bond measure funding, we've actively sought other funds to complement that bond funding. And United Front has been one way that we've done that. For many years, United Front has had Ridgeline Park acquisition funding as a priority. In addition, we've submitted multiple grant applications to state and federal agencies, and we've had a lot of landowner donations. So, in summary, here's an outline of some of the funding sources. Since '98, about 16.5 million has been spent on Ridgeline acquisition. Of that, about over 11.5 has been from local sources. State of Oregon has contributed 3/4 of a million. We have 1.9 million from various federal sources. And this is a very conservative estimate, 2.2 million in private donations. That number, in actuality, is probably larger. It's sometimes hard to categorize all the different ways that people donate land or reduce the sale price to make a deal happen. But all of that really is a credit to all the partnerships and collaboration that we've had with other organizations, and we've really tried to leverage our local funds with other funding sources. So, before the '98 bond measure was passed, this is what the Ridgeline Park system looked like. There you see Spencer Butte down here in the middle, and both east and west of there, there was some land, as well as, of course, Hendrix Park. Since then, we've made substantial additions to that. Here, we see Suzanne Arley Park, which makes that very important connection all the way over towards I-5. We filled in some additional lands here between Spencer Butte and Mount Baldy. This whole western side, Wild Everest Ridge, Murray Hill, Quarry Lane, all new. So, I'm going to flash back and forth a couple of times just so you can see that again. '97, current. '97, current.
What's the pending acquisition?
That's right. I'm going to talk more about this one in just a second. That is a pending acquisition, which I'll go into more detail. And if you saw the Register Guard article today, it was primarily focused on that. So, if you look at acres, in '97, we had over 800 acres. And if you include that pending acquisition, we have over 2,100 acres today. So, that's a 250 percent growth in acres over that time. So, pending acquisition. This is 193 acres. It's called the South Eugene Meadows LLC property. We've actually been working on this parcel for 10 years. And back in 2002, we actually had funding -- the whole funding package in place with the Forest Legacy Program. And some of you may remember the story of how the state of Oregon Legislature, the E-Board, when the full legislature was out of session, turned back a lot of federal money for all sorts of programs, including Forest Legacy, but it included social programs and lots of things. And so, that funding went away. The city and many other organizations lobbied the legislature to reverse their decision on that funding source, and so now that is an eligible funding source for us again. This specific site has been a United Front priority since 2008. So, every time United Front goes back to DC, they've sought funding for this site. All along, our goal was to leverage the bond funds with state and federal money because it's a large and expensive site, and we knew there wasn't enough bond measure money to pay for it. So, we specifically sought to get state and federal monies as well. Part of why we thought we had a good chance of that was it has very high habitat quality. When I mentioned earlier in the presentation about the prairie habitats and the oak savanna, oak woodland habitats, this site has a lot of that, and it's very attractive to funding organizations like O-Web, Forest Legacy, and turns out now, the Bonneville Power Administration, which has become our partner on this project. In addition, it fulfills a key recreation connection between Spencer Butte and Wild Everest Ridge. So, here's an overview of the funding source for that pending acquisition. So, at the top, we've got over $700,000 of bond measure money. O-Web has agreed to fund at $750,000. The Bonneville Power Administration, through their Wildlife Mitigation Program, is bringing $886,000 to the table. And then, landowners donating $790,000. So, the total is a very expensive deal, $3.14 million, but only about 22% of that is coming from our local funds. We've leveraged the rest. Another really important part of this deal is that BPA is bringing to the table what they call stabilization funds. And this is one of the only granting sources that we've come across so far for this type of work that actually grants stabilization funds, which is similar to O&amp;M funds. The idea here is that oftentimes, when you acquire a site, there's some upfront work that needs to happen to get it in an easily maintainable state. So, when we brought to their attention the fact that we have an O&amp;M gap already and that it's something that we would really like to see, some O&amp;M money for it, they were able to come through with three years of O&amp;M funding.
So, that $188 is in addition to the $886?
Correct. It's in addition to the $886.
And that's three years, that $188?
That's total. So, it's a third of that for each year. So, I think it's like $56,000 per year, something like that. And the 325 per acre per year is the number that we presented to council back in October, I think, the amount of money that we think it costs to maintain an acre of Ridgeline property per year. So, they basically met our request for that. So, now that we have -- once we get that, if -- once we close on that, we'll have over 2,000 acres of Ridgeline Park. There are a variety of things that we would like to and need to do there. So, we've been fortunate in the past, in the past several years, to do some good capital improvements, including renovating trails. We have We have about 12 miles of ridgeline trail right now, and we've done various trail renovation projects to address erosion issues or trail degradation issues. We've also added trailhead kiosks and signage, so that people know where they're going when they're in the ridgeline. Through a variety of projects, we've been able to improve habitat for native plants and wildlife. And we've been able to reduce the risk of wildfire through reducing hazardous fuels, invasive species, and overcrowded forests. This outlines some of the funding sources that we've been able to use. Again, just like with our acquisition, we've really benefited from our partnership with state and federal organizations. And so we've gotten grants from Oregon Parks, from OWEB, from federal sources like the BLM. We applied for and got several rounds of funding through the federal stimulus bill. And we've also had private donations and many volunteer work parties to help out.
What's ASICS?
ASICS is part of the general fund, the city's general fund, that's dedicated towards renovating existing general fund assets. And that's what we really use to leverage, serve as match for the other projects. So even though we've been able to do some of those projects, we still have existing needs out there. Back in October, when Johnny Medlin presented to you in the Budget Committee, he mentioned our O&M gap, which we estimate now at about $1.7 million annually for the entire Parks and Open Space System. Part of that is due to the large amount of ridgeline acreage that we have. And we also have a capital backlog. System-wide, it's about a $15 million backlog, and again, some of that is attributed to the ridgeline. Some of the types of problems we have are eroding or muddy trails and roads, invasive species like Scotch broom, which will spread and spread if not addressed, and English ivy, same thing. And this is more of an O&M issue, where we have illicit camps and dumping that, if not monitored, can grow and pose health issues for the community. In spite of those issues, Ridgeline Park continues to get increasing use and support from the community. Mountain bikers, for example, have expressed their desire to the council in the last few months about wanting more access. When we constructed the Ribbon Trail with stimulus dollars about a year ago, the mountain bike community was very eager to use that trail, and it's currently not designated for mountain biking, and they requested access to that, as well as to more of the park system. We continue to have hikers and trail runners using the system every day. Eugene is famous for having nature observers of all types, so people are bird watching and butterfly watching and looking at plants. We've also, over the last year, seen the rise of a friends group called Friends of the Ridgeline. This is actually really a subgroup of the Eugene Parks Foundation that's focused on the ridgeline. And this last, well, about two or three weeks ago, they sponsored their first-ever Ridgeline Day, which was a great success. They had people come out to do work parties to maintain our trails, to remove invasive species, as well as just go on hikes to appreciate the nature or the views that we have in the So going back to our vision map, this is what was produced in 2008. And again, I'll highlight these things that were identified for trail connections, as well as habitat protection. So trail connection going this way, habitat protection. And with the actions of council and staff on Suzanne Arley Park, we've made that happen. And now with this pending acquisition, we're going to be able to extend the trail, as well as protect habitat in that direction. So in summary, we've made tremendous progress in the last 14 years with the support of the community, as well as our ability to leverage grants. And because of that, we have an increasingly connected ridgeline park that benefits both people and wildlife in the area. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or listen to discussion.
I just want to say, it's a very impressive story. And I want to express, I think, on behalf of all of us, actually, a lot of appreciation to the work of staff is done, a lot of appreciation of the public for their support, and a lot of appreciation especially to all those partners, the volunteers, and those who have made those donations possible. It's amazing amount of effort coming together, even getting that O&M stuff is really amazing. And the part that I don't see here that I'm actually kind of interested in, and I don't know how you would figure it out, but I think there must be some really good economic benefit to our community from having this attribute here that people come to and want to utilize. And it would be interesting to think about it in that term, because I think, you know, our thing is being a great city for the arts and outdoors, and this is a key piece of that, and that attracts people to want to come to our community, to want to work in our community. Just kind of thinking about it in that way maybe is another piece of the story. We do a good economic story about how we leverage dollars and partners and all of that, and I just wonder if there's another piece to this about what it does for our local economy in general, and just sort of put that out to you to think about in how we tell the story of Eugene. So I've got Betty, and then George.
Thank you. First, this is really looking wonderful. Congratulations. I would like to point out that we're building on what people back in the Depression started, where they had the foresight to save some of the land and start the process. So I think that's really great. Are there gaps in, I couldn't, I'm not too good a map reader, are there still big gaps in the trail that need to be filled? There are, aren't there?
Yeah, there's actually two issues there. I'll go back here. So there are gaps in lands, the two most important ones are between this pending acquisition and Wild Everest Ridge. So to get from here to here, so that's a future goal to make that connection. And then the next one would be from, with the Willow Creek, basically about where Hynek's is, down towards West 11th. And that's an area that we've been working on for a while and haven't had success in getting there, but those two are the key geographic areas to get more land. In terms of the trail connection, in some of these places, we've been able to acquire the land, like both Suzanne Arley Park, this pending one, and Wild Everest Ridge, we actually haven't constructed trails there yet. So we have the land to do that in the future, but there's currently no funding available to actually construct the trail.
What streets, the pending acquisition, what streets go into that?
The two main streets, on the east side here, this is Willamette Street at 52nd, and we actually have a trailhead there right now to serve Spencer Butte.
Yes, I've walked from there.
And then on the north side is Blanton.
Uh-huh. So this just extends the area that you can walk?
Correct.
The new acquisition walk.
Yep.
And it's, is there any plan to, or does it exist, bike parking at West Amazon? That's one place that you can access the trail without a car easily. Going up to 52nd and Willamette on a bike is rather difficult. But if there were bike parking, that's one place I know of where if there were bike parking, people could ride from any place, leave their bikes, and access the trail there. Is there any bike parking there, plans for it?
I actually don't think we have bicycle parking at any trailhead in the system, so that would be a good thing to think about adding.
That's a good one, because it is easy to get there by bike. From any place you could go through Amazon. And another question, I think. Rattlesnakes. It just came into my mind. Are there still rattlesnakes there?
At Spencer Butte, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Every year, we get two or three calls from people who see rattlesnakes on the summit of Spencer Butte.
They're inclusive, though?
Yeah. They're not seen very often, but two or three times a year.
I know someone whose little boy was bitten by one up there, but it's rather, it's really beautiful, but it's rather ominous when you enter it from the parking lot. It says, "Falling rims, rattlesnakes, poison oak." You think, oh!
Be a cooler, too.
I'm glad to hear, you are making better signs to mark out where the trail is, aren't you? I've been, I was lost up there once at 5:00 o'clock when the days were short. And the mud, what are you doing about that?
The muddy trails, we've been steadily addressing those, and that, some of the capital improvement projects we've been doing, both with stimulus funds, as well as with the ASICS funds, are to address the existing trail system where we have issues like that. That actually, that muddy section I showed in that slide is one we've actually been able to address. So we have a list of priority stretches of trail where we want to do renovation projects on the trail, and so we're slowly but surely working on that. The one this summer is going to be on the Blanton Ridge section, so just going near the 52nd and Willamette parking lot on an existing trail, we're going to try to address that there.
There's a lot of vandalism for cars parked at the trailhead, that's right. Do you have any ideas about that?
That's a challenging issue for us at any of our remote sites. At the Spencer Butte main parking lot towards the top, we actually have digital motion-activated video cameras to try to be able to capture images if there is vandalism. We've had limited success so far in using that successfully. Hopefully, it serves as a little bit of a deterrent, but it's just very difficult to get enough imagery of a high enough quality to use it for prosecution purposes.
I know the parking lot on Fox Hollow, you can see a lot of broken glass around it frequently.
Yep.
But anyway, it's all really wonderful. It's a great asset for the community. Thank you.
George Polling, and then Pat, and then Mike, and then Alan.
Eric, on this particular slide, you have up the gray shaded areas down toward the bottom of that, and then there's the ones, you said those were identified for future trail connection and habitat protection?
The large blocks, so I think you're talking about, for example, this here and this over here?
Yeah, and then there's another smaller one up above.
Yep. So those represent high habitat quality areas, not necessarily trail connections, and not necessarily for public ownership. So part of this vision was that a lot of the land may stay in private ownership, and this is to identify where some of that high-quality habitat is, and maybe there's a role to outreach with private citizens of a vacant-managed habitat, if they choose to.
Who made that determination?
That was based on input during the whole public process that went into this. So there were public meetings throughout the Eugene-Springfield area, and a lot of staff involvement from agencies from around the region.
And I don't know if you have this, or maybe, John, you can help out. Of the money that was identified in the bond measures for this type of acquisition, how much of that is left?
So once we complete the Misen, this pending acquisition, we will have spent the money identified for Ridgeline Park from the 2006 bond measure.
Okay, all right. And then one last question, other than the three-year BPA funding for the O&M, what kind of outside gobsting has been going on?
We continue to try to get grant money to do sort of capital-like restoration projects, and we think we can do that for some of these sites. And we think we can, there's a possibility to get grant money for some trail work. More of the routine O&M money, like addressing illicit camps and dumping, that's really not grant-eligible type stuff, so on those, we're just trying to be as efficient as we can, given our current situation, and hope that maybe there's eventually a long-term solution that council and the community can help with.
Do you expect the backlog of the O&M projects to grow as rapidly as the backlog in our street repairs did?
So system-wide, I would say that the backlog in the Parks and Open Space System will continue to grow if it's not addressed. The more, the assets don't have the adequate maintenance that they would need on an annual basis, eventually those turn into deferred maintenance, and then that turns into a needed, you know, capital project on the road.
I would say yes. I think part of it with any infrastructure, you have the same kind of curve that I know Kurt uses all the time on pavement maintenance, and as any asset just starts to get older, and you reduce the total amount of maintenance, it starts to deteriorate at an increasing pace. So we would expect that with facilities, we'd expect that with roads, you'd expect that with sewer system, then you'd expect that with parks, infrastructure. So I would say it's an important issue, and it's not critical, but it's important, and that's partly why we're starting to have those conversations around all of our infrastructure.
Thank you.
Before I call, and Pat, I will just, I know this is on a much bigger scale, but I would just hearken back to what we talked about yesterday, about Aubrey Park and the sort of ownership that some volunteers are helping take over maintenance, and some heavy-duty work in our park system, and how we keep trying to build that kind of public investment in our parks. And I know there's some things that they can't do, and I know they take some oversight and some work with, but still, it's a great thing to have people willing to step up to that level. Pat, you're next.
And I'd like to tag on to that. Mayor, Golden Garden Park has had extensive volunteer help, and Irwin Parks out in West Eugene. So a lot of parks have that, the people who live there care about them and want to make them look good. I have a comment regarding, the mayor's, mayor talked about the economic impact of the parks. I just had a conversation with the developer yesterday, who was talking about why the people live in Eugene. You know, we have tough time as far as jobs are concerned, and the economy is difficult here, but one of the reasons that people do choose to live in Eugene is exactly what you're talking about, Mayor Percy, that we do have a beautiful surrounding environment. And this was nothing but enhanced that. And I'll join other councils in praise for the work that's gone on through the years and that continues to go on at a very high level. And I'd like to point out West Eugene, you know, you think of the Ridgeline Park as being along the ridgeline, but you follow this green dotted line, goes right around Ward 8, goes right around Ward 6, and connects into what is the Amazon Bike Trail. And a comment on the Amazon Divergent Channel, you notice there's a green strip that runs all the way out to Fernridge Lake, beyond the city limits. Well, that's City Park. We own that, and it's, it looks like it's future soft surface share-use trail, but you can ride a bike on it today. It's the Corvantes Levis along the A2 Channel, and it's very, very usable. In fact, I would challenge anybody to argue with me that that little stretch between Greenhill Road and Fairbut Road is about the prettiest place to ride a bike in Eugene. You have to climb over fences to do it, and I don't know how much I want to encourage that, but it really is beautiful out there. And take your fishing rod, because there are croppers in there. It's city land. It's not, correct, is it trespassing?
No, no, it's City Park land.
I don't go there, really.
You know of people that might.
We actually recently put signs up so people knew it was City Park land.
Yeah, yeah, I did notice that, riding my bike over there. New sign.
Maybe you should point out for Pat where the illegal places are.
But to comment on Council Taylor's bike parking, those green gays are great to train your bike up to, but you have to climb over them to do it. So the only other thing I would say is, as Council Taylor had suggested, that there is a certain amount of vandalism that happens with POVs there. And we, you know, we have one of the best wireless video companies in the world, I believe, right here in Eugene, in Feeny Wireless, and they provide, they have amazing technology that can help relatively inexpensively to address that issue. And I know that you're in touch with that, and you know what's going on there. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your comments regarding the economic impact of the trails.
Thank you. Mike, you have?
Eric, good work, and really nice presentation, too. That was really clear and detailed and well-done. I really appreciated that. George spoke to a couple of my questions with regard to the $60,000 roughly ongoing O&M after the third year. I just want to be clear, we don't have an identified source for that ongoing new expense that we're adding with this. I am glad that we're making this purchase in this fashion. I'm exceptionally happy that we're able to do it by leveraging, you know, 25% local dollars to create something like this. I am concerned that we add this capital asset and give ourselves, in doing so, I would not want to see us give ourselves not want to see us give ourselves further rationale or justification for wanting to create a new, a new tax or a new revenue stream now in order to try and serve that, so I'm hopeful that we'll make some hard decisions instead. My other question about the remaining, I heard you say that we've now tapped out that 7.75 that was tasked to the acquire land for natural areas in the '06 bond.
So two of them, 2 million of that 7.75 is for the Willamette River?
Right.
We have not spent that, but we've spent the 5.75 for the ridgeline.
That was the 17s in the north part, right there on the, on the map. I remember that, okay. My other question is, I guess it might be for Johnny back here, perhaps for you, I don't know. Of the remaining balance in that '06 bond, much like the street bond that we put out, we had a, a list of projects and a map of where those were. One of the other things that we identified there was the 10.5 million, a portion of which was for the Santa Clara Community Park that we've already talked about setting aside, but the other portion was for the 13 neighborhood parks that we were to have in that, several of which are in northern part of our community. So I'm, I'm assuming then two things. One, that we still have those funds set aside to acquire those neighborhood parks, but I'd love to hear, maybe not if now, at some point, how we're doing on that. My understanding is we've only acquired one of those 13 in the, since the '06 bond. Am I correct with that?
Johnny would better, we do have the money, but Johnny would be better able to answer the specifics about that.
Specifically, the question, do we have the money for the Santa Clara Park? I don't know if that's part of your question, but it-
I know we've set that aside. I know that part.
I figured I'll answer that, that it's still there.
Yeah, good.
The money we have for community and neighborhood parks, we have expended money at Amazon for expansion, which was in the bond. Of the 13 parks, we have one that has been done, and the others, you may recall that when you made the decisions on the Arley purchase, that there was a trade-off, that the Arley purchase came from that category, so that will impact our ability to do the whole 13. Of course, what we're finding is a very difficult time finding flat land in the areas that we need for neighborhood parks, and so we're looking at actually buying developed property in those areas and holding it to redevelop as parks, that even in the economic climate we have now, there has not been much opportunity, even by, say, older homes that might be on the market. So it's, it's a strain to get the neighborhood parks.
Are those 13 parks identified in our proposed project plan?
They were. Probably the best way-
My apologies. My better question is, are we charging SDCs based on those being in the project plan?
They are in the project and priority plan over the window to make those acquisitions. So I would, I don't remember the exact methodology, but I would say yes.
Okay, I would, I would then, I guess, just within my last few seconds, say that as we work through Envision Eugene and we grow more densely, the need for those neighborhood parks, at least to my mind, becomes more pronounced, and it won't get easier to get that land, it'll get harder and more expensive, I think, as time goes on. I'm not an expert in it, but that would be my guess. So, I don't know, maybe we can incentivize folks to get that land squared away or something, but I, I hope we use that as our kind of next area of focus with regard to these bond funds that are still left.
For the initiatives that we do, that is our next priority, but recalling that we're on a willing seller program-
Right.
-that finding people that want to sell within the price range that fits the appraisals, another thing that unfortunately we're finding in today's market with the decrease in property values, people who have an interest of liquidating their property often find that the amount, the appraisal amount we do on it doesn't satisfy their interest. We're finding that as a problem as well. It's a challenge, but it is one which is our highest priority for those funds that we have ourselves. We're still looking at other opportunities for grants and other leverage funds comes up, and I think we should be open to looking at those as they come, each for their own merit. But our initiative is only with the parks.
Thank you for your hard work.
Before I turn to Alan, I just wanted to make the comment, and I recall the conversation that we had when we were discussing the Arley property, and talking about how difficult it was to find those parks, and I agree with you, Mike, that I think it's important for us to look for and continue to try to find parks for those areas, but it hasn't been an easy thing to accomplish thus far. Alan?
Yeah, Eric, nice presentation, very good. I think it might be the most beautiful presentation. So, nice doll on that. As, as Betty said, we are kind of standing on the shoulders of those who came before us in 1938 when they voted to, to buy the park, Skinnerby Park down there, or Spencer Butte Park, sorry, acreage. Unfortunately, the other half of that decision in 1938 is in grave danger, which was Civic Stadium, but, so at least we're standing on the shoulders of half of them. I think this is a real impressive story. I really love the, the vision of this, of this, of the Ridgeline Trail, and being able to walk from Hendrix Park or LCC all the way to Fernridge would be great. You have any sense of ballpark when we would be able to do that? Crystal balling.
Given the situation that we've just talked about in terms of the capital backlog and not adding new assets until we can pay for them, hard to say.
Yeah.
But the great thing is that we've, we've, we've set the framework to make it possible in the future.
Yeah. Well, it does, it does really enhance the livability of the, of all the citizens of Eugene, and like Pat noticed, it goes through Wards Two, One, Six, Eight, and Seven, I think. So it goes through almost all of the, all of the city, and it is truly an asset of the city. I really like the, yeah, it doesn't go through mine either, but-
That's a good point.
I, I do like the new acquisition. I think that's a great, what, the little funky extension that goes out?
Mm-hmm.
What is that?
That's actually a right-of-way.
So that's a right-of-way along?
It's basically an extension of 52nd Street and an extension of it.
What's there now? Is that a road?
It's a paved road for maybe half that distance, and then it's a dirt road for the remaining half.
Oh, okay. So it'd be a connector, part of it would be on a road?
Right.
Okay. So, do you have a sense of the update, maybe, Johnny, on the Beverly property and that acquisition down there? And where we are on that?
I think that the status of that is similar to what we last talked to. It's been on hold. Any prices that we have been interested in seeing the value to has not been consistent with the prices that the property owner has wanted for the property. To further complicate that, of course, now with the other things that we've done, funding sources that we have replaced several years ago, now have been exhausted for other purposes like this or the Arley, or. So if that property's status did change, we recognize that the council has said in the past that they want us to keep looking at it, that if the status did change, we would have to look at that price and putting together some kind of a funding package to move forward. No change on that.
Yeah. And maybe it could be some kind of leveraging like we've done with this new acquisition, which is a really good piece of work. I guess the, the takeaway one for me of all this is, is pointing out the O&M deficit of $1.5 million a year, plus the capital backlog of $15 million, that's getting bigger. And as John said, you know, it's not critical, but it takes a long time to get the solutions in place by the, and we have this very bad habit in the city of Eugene of doing nothing until it's critical, and then it got a lot more expensive, and if we were more proactive about it, we would, it would be a lot less expensive and easier to deal with. And, you know, case in point is our $200 million street backlog that we're whittling away at extremely slowly, and it's getting worse over time. And I think we do need to address that, both of those issues, those two things, the issue of the O&M deficit for parks and maintenance, and the, the capital that we need to be able to do the project, not only deal with the backlog, but also develop the properties that we've been buying. We bought all these properties, and we can't do anything to them. I mean, I think you said maybe three times during the presentation that we have, we have this land, but it'll be a long time before we put a trail in, because we just don't have the money. You know, we need to think about, proactively, about a levy, a bond, or some other kind of financing mechanism to be able to deal with those two issues.
Chris, you're next.
Thanks. I appreciate the notion about what is the economic aspect of this, because for me, quality of life and quality of livelihood have always been connected concepts. They are mutually supportive of each other. And I'm also real aware of the notion that if you decide to take on an asset, you really do have to think about how you're going to take care of that asset over the long term. And with that said, each asset has a different, I think, pressure for that O&M obligation. If I accept a road, if I build a road, or I have a public building, the pressure to maintain it is very great. If I accept a natural or an open space, I may not feel quite as much pressure to preserve it or to maintain it as I might for a road. I mean, it's a little different standard. I, I, that's triage talking. It's not what I want to do, it's triage talk. But the point is, if, if I pass on a piece of valuable property, because I don't know how I'm going to take care of it right now, I may turn away an asset that would really be valuable. I think that was part of the conversation around Suzanne Arley Park. Doesn't mean we want to go forever without taking care of it. You don't just buy it and then just leave it parked in the garage and never drive it. That wouldn't be very valuable. But I do think if I, if it's my everyday car, I do have to be very conscious of it. I have to change the oil and keep it maintained all the time. And when we talk about neighborhood parks, that is something, that's my everyday car, I'm driving that every day, and the obligation to keep it maintained is much greater than another kind of, of park. So as we talk about acquiring neighborhood parkland, that really is where that conversation about, okay, how are you going to take care of that land? That's, that's mown grass, that's turf, that's shelters, those are play structures. That's stuff you've got to keep up, as opposed to, as it showed us in the picture, it's muddy, it's eroded, it looks bad, but it's still a natural area, and I can live with that a little more easily than I can live with grass that doesn't get mowed, or irrigated, or a shelter that's not taken care of. So with that said, I think we're trying to strike the right balance, and it's, and it's not an easy thing to do, and it's not really good for me to try to second-guess you on what that should be, because I appreciate the work you've done so far, but we are very conscious of the fact there is always going to be an operational and a maintenance obligation to anything we take on. And you seem to know that as well as we do, but we always remind ourselves it's important.
You touched on a little bit, but I would add to that conversation, that every time we take on something, it has a public safety element that goes with it, too, that adds to our, our capacity around public safety, that we have to sort of build into the picture of thinking about it. Part of that is that, you know, people who come in and damage property, but it's also the people who live out there, and it's, it's all of those things that create costs and, and safety issues for us. We're going to go to the next round, and there's Betty and then Pat.
Thank you. Alan's already touched on part of what I wanted to say the second round, the Beverly property, the headwaters, and I have the question, is there any, I know a lot of the bond money was for natural areas, and not, not necessarily specifically for the ridgeline. Is there any of that natural area money left?
There is approximately 2 million left in the natural area count, but that was designated for Willamette River frontage.
It was designated?
Mm-hmm.
So we couldn't use that for the, and this is, this is a very important part of the whole thing, the property that, the headwaters that run right into the Amazon Creek. And was that, is that a part of your plan, or is anyone thinking about that now?
At the present time, given the situation that Johnny just summarized with the status of those negotiations, and as well as not having any funding in place right now, that's not anything that we're actively working on unless something changes in that situation.
I think it's really important to keep that from being developed, but is there any thought about restrooms for parts of this trail? But I'm talking about the, I don't know what the word for it, is the natural kind, like they have on the island at Crater Lake?
Uh-huh. Like a composting toilet or something like that?
I guess, yeah.
The only-
Not with trees.
No, not with trees.
The only place we have any facilities right now is at the main Spencer Butte parking lot, where six months out of the year we have porta potties. Other than that, we do not have any, well, and also in West Eugene, at Metallar Prairie Overlook, we, we have porta potties as well. It's a little bit off the ridgeline.
Those aren't so nice. I was, I was thinking more like a composting.
Mm-hmm.
But that, I'd just like to suggest that would be a good idea.
Yeah.
And it might help to keep the places cleaner, too, possibly. As for, I wanted to respond to what Mike said, I think we do need new revenue streams for the things that we really need. And the, the whole reason we have government is because we can't do things for ourselves, and we come together and have a government, and we pool money to do the things that are needed for the whole society, not just for an individual. And if there isn't enough money to do the things that need to be done, we need to look for new revenue streams. Thank you.
Pat, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Really, this is a slightly different subject, it's still parks, but I just want to remind everybody that tonight, there is a, coinciding with the Budget Committee meeting, there's a public hearing, open house, on the Bethel Community Park, which they're planning a facility out there, or it's in the early stages of a master plan. So just remind people who may be listening that that is happening tonight, 6:30 at Metaview School, and I will actually be attending that.
Skipping Budget Committee.
Thank you.
All right, and I guess the only other comment I would make around this is that I think one of the nicest things about this, aside from all the wonderful natural attributes and so forth, is that it's something we share with the broader community, that we share with Springfield and County, and I think that's a really, it's, it's a very positive thing that we're building together, that's something we should all be proud of. So I appreciate that very, very much. With that, thank you so much, and-
Thank you.
We all enjoyed it a great deal. Thank you. Okay, I think that-
We have Brenda and-
That ends our business for today. Thank you.